On Wednesday, April ninth to order at seven o'clock. Now I will ask Diane to do the roll. Trustee Fluger.
Present.
Trustee Hef.
Present.
Trustee Hummel.
Present.
Trustee Radke.
Here.
Trustee Saylor.
You're.
Trustee Verklin.
Present.
All right, so then we will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance with a moment of silence. I.
In the states of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under the universal with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great. We're to number four, motion to approve the consent agenda for a meeting minutes of March twelfth, twenty twenty five, board meeting, monthly bills and previous month's journal entries.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Radke.
Second.
Second by Hess. Any discussion on any of those items? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one carries. And public comment, any public comment?
Yeah, mine.
All righty. Then we will go to President's report and under there we have Arbor Day proclamation and I am going to let Mr. Rep. Saad tell us what we're doing with that.
Sure.
Juror, oh.
I'll stand. I came down here just because I was the person responsible for this proclamation to the Tree City USA. And the main purpose was to give us more than five for grants. And so any little edge that we when compete with other villages and other cities that we needed that. So the proclamation will help us fulfill that final thing and I guess we're gonna get a plaque or something and Ben's gonna get a new kind of. Now, we'll have the Arbor Day official celebration is the last Friday in April, but which is May, April twenty fifth, but we're doing things with the fourth grade class at Ripple. We're planting a tree, which we need to do. And that's been, that will be on May second, May second at the fourth graders. And it'll be about twelve o'clock is when they'll be gathering there, so. And we did receive our grant from the state. And so we'll be planting probably forty trees in the village, in the boulevards that have been pretty much taken down by Emerald Ashford. So we'll be doing that with the ecology class as well, working through Jeanie Brunner. So they'll be involved as well. So that's it.
What kind of trees do you look for when you're planting those?
Um. Because the village has a lot of maple trees. Because we got the state grant, we couldn't buy any maple, so we're going with oak, ginkgo. Ben's been having a list of people that are providing some preferences.
Okay.
And so we'll fulfill those preferences the best we can with the supply that we can obtain.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for all the work that you've been doing to do this. Uh, any questions for Juris?
What's up?
Any questions?
Thank you.
No.
You're not gonna believe this, but thank you for your service to the village over the years. And even though I disagree with those big trees that rip up our sidewalks and stuff, I'm probably.
That's a shade, that's a shade joke.
All right, thank you, Juris.
But you do my.
All right, onto Commission and Committee reports, Airport Commission, Trustee Zerflu.
Um, we approved at our meeting the minutes from February third, which had gone over at our March meeting, we did not have a commission meeting in March. And we will, uh, the biggest thing that came out of our meeting April third in the minutes I did not receive yet is the instruction, the ad hoc committee that's looking at the updated the airport, everything from the turnover, taking down the big trees that have to come down on different people's yard. So that is the big thing right now and the ad hoc committee is ready to move forward and they'll probably start moving trees, if I remember correctly, either August or September. And the Bureau of Aeronautics in Madison is working, will just do on that. Some more to come on that, otherwise, sorry, I don't have much.
Okay. We will move to Police and Fire Commission Chairman Stewart.
Good evening, we met Monday, the seventh of, uh, this week. Um, besides what's in your minutes in the packets, um, of note, in close session, we moved along a applicant who is a part-time police officer applicant, when that's part of the process of the phase, Dean Metaphone. We'll see how that goes. In the fire department side, there were one fire department first responder applicant that was previously interviewed and did well and he will be moved on to the next phase as well. Just for fun facts, in the last year, PFC processed approximately forty-one people for potential positions within the village, police or fire. Twelve of those were on the police side, out of that, two hires were made. And approximately twenty-nine were on the fire department's side. And out of that, approximately eleven hires were made. And when I say, uh, the different phases of our hiring process for both the fire and police, that includes a application, resume review and a analysis of their essay questions that we have them answer regarding Port Edwards. Background investigations, a commission interview, medical and drug exam. And on the police side, we do a psychological exam. So, um, it seems to be calming down, we're catching up and we believe we're gonna skip our meeting in May and meet in June because we're caught up with all our work. So probably June is our next meet.
Okay. Any questions for Commissioner Stewart? Nope, okay, thank you. Uh, Plan Commission did not meet, so we are on to Public Works Committee Chairman Saylor.
We did not have a meeting, but we need to schedule our next one.
We'll do that probably next week at the rework meeting. Parks and Recreation Chairman Hummel.
We also did not meet last month and look forward to planning the next meeting, uh, next week.
Perfect, see if we can check each other a little bit. Chairman Zerflu for Public Safety.
Well, we met, but the fire chief and police chief did not show up. I took it personally, but Ben reassured me that was that case. Assistant Chief Ryan Lukey came, he represented the fire department. Very brief, uh, discussion about their monthly report. I did receive a call from Chief Brandon at my home later that night. He apologized because he was over on the east side working on something and it just kinda blew it off. So it reminded me when he was a kid at St. Mary's, you know, I just told him that will not happen. Cause I'm getting off subject here. Uh, our next meeting will be the fourth, um, Wednesday in, in, uh, April. If, um, I am reappointed as chairman and if the, even on public safety, some of that, you bought it. So stay tuned for next week. We go and set our meetings.
Okay.
Sorry, I talked so long.
Any questions for Chairman Zerflu? All right, Chairman Hess for you.
Uh, we did meet the Planning Property Legislative Committee, met on March nineteenth. Um, some highlights from it, we did talk, have an update on the DLI ad hoc committee. And we did have a meeting April eighth yesterday. Um, there really has been no response from DMI. Uh, Ben did get one response email, it was really nothing in it. At least they did respond to an email. The meeting yesterday was productive, it didn't give us any answers, but it gave us some paths to talk to some other municipalities that may have worked through the same issues that we're going through. There's really, I'll be honest, no silver bullet to get those properties. Uh, we have to continue to try to work through DMI. We talked about how we can try to get them to move faster. Um, or do we look at possibility of if we do end up with that property, what can we do with it? And how can we get it developed? So we're exploring all opportunities, there's really no concrete answers yet, but we're gonna continue to research and understand what our options are, so. Um, the other thing that came out of the first meeting was that in investigation, we were not able to locate any record of a bond being applied for and the city and the village is not, so they did try to uncover that the first time they do it through the demolition. Um, update on the action on property one sixty Market Avenue. Um, Ben has a little bit more information, if you share that with us, please.
Um, so yes, ambition of that would be the old post office property. Um, so obviously we've been doing the five hundred dollar ordinance citations per week. So that bill is, uh, hefty, I think we're up to almost sixteen, seventeen thousand, I haven't ran the last numbers. Um, so we're citations keep stacking up. Um, again, we've discussed this over and over with legal and people that were here last night heard it also. Um, those citations, we can't put against their taxes or nothing like that. They're stacking up, you know, we can use it for ammo leverage, leverage against them. But at the end of the day, there's really nothing legally we can do unless we wanna go to a raise order or that next level. Um, meanwhile, we've been having some good conversation with the owner. Um, this week, Monday, I met him there, I did, not the owner representative from the company, came up here from Ohio. Um, we had three contractors on site. I walked around with the contractor and with representative and they definitely are giving, um, the company estimates on fixing the roof, the mold inside, the back wall and other things. Um, so at this point, I will say they're talking to us, they actually had somebody physically here walking around and um, seeing what the work is gonna entail, what it's gonna do. Um, I told them nothing's gonna change from our end, the citations will keep stacking up. And as soon as you guys come up with a, with a timeline, please get ahold of me. And, um, we'll see where this goes. So it definitely wasn't positive to see somebody here that was putting some effort into it. I mean, they flew in and put some effort into it, so I'll keep the committee updated as we move forward on that project.
Thank you. Um, the Cyber One tip loan, the village received ten thousand dollars. Five thousand from each of the two owners. They're still twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars behind. Uh, they did make the February payment, sixty day notice has been sent. Uh, we're waiting for them to come back with a plan to catch, have them catch up. So we discussed legal avenues with Attorney Abston, um, what happens if they don't come up with a plan? So right now we're in a wait and hold to hopefully they come back with a plan to catch up to the twenty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars. Uh, more on that at the next meeting. Um, number ten on our agenda was a discussion of possible action on facility use agreement. After much discussion, we keep, we are bringing to the board a recommendation of the facility use agreement, it is in your packet. Um, the changes really are in the prohibitions, uh, we removed several of them. And attorneys, we, he recommended that we keep in alcohol gambling and charging admission fees, uh, basically to help protect the village, um, just to set that out. Uh, really does rely on the approver, the village administrator, when he approved it, to go through some of these details with the, um, person that's signing this agreement. So I guess I would look for a motion to approve this facility use agreement. Um, then we can have discussion on it.
Still move.
Uh, motion by Hummel, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Radke, discussion. Ben.
Ben, so I just wanna add a few things. So again, I know there's, I've had a few call, alcohol consumption is a big thing for people that are using this on the weekends for graduation parties and so on, that's not an issue. Um, we'll just ask that question, I'll sign off on it. Nothing's gonna change that way, I know there was a lot of misinterpretation, but again, that is still there for the weekends for people having graduation parties. Um, obviously when this comes to, to the bigger users, um, I will meet with the schools, the lines and, um, fire department and get these forms filled out with their events that they know of today. We will talk about, you know, alcohol gambling, if they're gonna sell cards or any kind of fundraiser, what they're doing. Um, the school is the only one that would be charging admission and that would be for a level three baseball, our softball game at Ripple Creek. Um, those odds, I'm not being that way, but highly unlikely, but we will include that in there and the date will be determined and I bring that back to you. Um, as like I stated in the committee, I won't make this long, you know, we've been working with these facilities for a lot of years. Um, our parks, over the twenty-some years I've been here, worked with the office staff, we've only had one incident that somebody left it dirty, right? We've had great luck, the people that rent our facilities are all local people. Um, you know, hometown people, everybody kinda knows, so this isn't any, I don't see any issues, this is just cleaning up some paperwork. Um, and again, I watch on the weekends, the local PD watches on the weekends, we have a weekend operator that looks over this stuff. So I don't, um, see any issues about this, just getting some signing done and, um, clarifying some simple terms, I guess, for that.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
Okay.
Um, so there's a motion made, did you wanna add anything right there?
If there's any, no discussion, we can take it down.
Okay. Um, so motion to approve draft number two of the facilities use agreement with the removal of items number one, three, four and six, as shown in the new copy here of the restriction section. Motion made by Hummel, second by Radke, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That one carries.
Okay. Um, continuing on discussion, uh, the next motion we'd be looking for is adding this facility use agreement to the language in chapter twelve, as shown in your packet and under section five. So the two places we'd like to add it, um, in twelve point one five and five point one two, under number four.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Saylor, second by Radke, discussion. Any questions, families concerned? No? Okay. Hearing none, um, motions made by Saylor, second by Radke, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one carries.
Then we got into a discussion about chickens, um, having poultry. Um, we basically are in the process of organizing, um, some strategies around how we would do it, looking at the Cusas Grand Rapids, Saratoga's, I believe, was the other one.
Marchfield.
Marchfield.
Okay.
Um, the keynote here is that there is a proposal to introduce a bill at the state level requiring all municipalities to allow residents to have chickens, but the municipalities can put restrictions around that. So I think it's, uh, probably advisable for us to at least come up with what we will do if that came to pass. Um, if we're required to do it, we can decide whether we want to or not if it doesn't come to pass. So we still have that choice to say, no, we don't allow it, but, um, we're trying to just get ahead of the game and understand what we would want if this law does come. So that discussion, President Mansell is working up some details on kind of organizing, there's a very permissive or there's very restrictive and where do we wanna be in that? So we're at least having discussions around that at the committee level. So that's, uh, next meeting will be set next, the sixteenth.
Any questions? Trustee Zerflu.
Thank you, Madam President, Chairman Hess. About your DMI property, um, are you staying in touch with Ms. Gert, the Wood County Treasurer, since Wood County owns some of that property down there? Do you guys get together on occasion, I hope?
Uh, we talked last night, she was here at the meeting. So, um, yes, there's really two pieces to the puzzle. This one's focused on DMI property, industrial side, but we've gotta continue to drive the front side, the Cut County owned. And, yes, it's, the, the real problem is getting the millions of dollars needed for the demolition and raising, so, um, that's becoming a difficult task.
She's a good person, have on your side.
Yes, she did. Yes.
A one.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What's the status of the twenty thousand dollar grant? That we went haves, you said, or whatever on the other bill?
We, he, go ahead.
So, so obviously that was a twenty thousand match grant, right? Ten thousand comes from Wood County, the original plan was Bill was gonna put in five, DMI was gonna put in the other five to get to that twenty. Um, we are, I have reached out in emails to DMI and there hasn't been any, um.
Okay, so we didn't.
They're, they're not involved, so I have to go in May, um, to discuss with the future of that grant. So that will be a topic at the next pit meeting, what we wanna do, obviously the YMCA, when we drafted, the YMCA is part of that, um, grant, meaning if the YMCA is interested in, in kicking in five to go on, you know, with the, with the ten from Wood County and the village wanted to still go five and the Y wanted to go five, we could still pull that together and basically send it in for development. Now that grant was, was pulled from Wood County through basic development, that's kinda what that's after. So it's still on the table, I'm gonna bring that to the pit committee to see if, like I said, I'm going there in May, scheduled meeting to decide if we want to entertain the YMCA. Um, I did also talk last night to Wood County, Jason was here to see if Wood County wants to entertain anything with that grant. Um, even though it's through there, it's a different agency, so we're definitely gonna decide next month how we're gonna move forward there. I did talk to Wood County and could we put that grant out? I mean, if we could put that whole stance though, right? I mean, we could say at this point, we're not ready to do anything. It's just puts us in a bad reputation when they're willing to give us money and we're not ready for it. So I think either we try to come up with a plan and be able to use it with the Y or other agencies or I, I think at this point we'll have to decide maybe to decline it, I guess that'll be up to the pit.
But as of right now, we haven't dispersed any funds towards that.
No, no, cause it's, it comes their ten first.
Okay.
So it's still available to us. Uh, one comment I will add is the YMCA property was brought up, the YMCA is pushing ahead to demolish that building and then make it a green space or do something with it. So they are taking that on, um, and Ben is aware of that, they've applied for a demolition permit. Um, is it approved or?
So we're working on, you know, there's, uh, you know, there's stages of that, that, that basically, um, Bill, J. Admin and Building Inspector can waive things and look at different things. So obviously it's a whole different animal than the one that we're, the other one. Um, so the permit is, they paid the money for the permit. Um, I'm looking for a plot plan and some ideas of future. They're still waiting on the asbestos plan yet, on abatement, so that's a huge, uh, piece of certification I'm looking for, um, to make sure, cause at that point then we let the residents around the area know what's gonna happen, so, um, waiting for some more paperwork from them. But you know, they're just cleaning the inside, but they're taking shelving and things like that, but no demo of the building has actually started yet. Can that start until the specimen abatement has been, um, approved? And we have a plan in hand before they can actually start knocking anything down, wall wise.
But just, that is just to update the board that there is progress, they have applied for a permit and their plan is to get it approved and get it demoed.
Thank you. Anything else for Pitten? Well, thank you, FHR.
Uh, FHR, we met on April third. Um, Mr. Martinson gave us an update on the replacement of the server, the server is here in place, um, Wood County IT has some finish up work to do and they're probably not gonna get to us until they get, uh, some of the stuff done at the courthouse that they're doing. But the equipment is here, correct?
Correct.
So we had that going on. Um, also, uh, Mr. Martinson gave us an update on the replacement of a police officer and the police and fire commission moving forth in eligibility list. Um, we didn't have all the information that night, so we actually, actually met again on, had a special meeting on April seventh to discuss, and I would like to make a motion. Um, it was to discuss the wage and benefit of a lateral transfer for a police officer. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the wage and benefit package that was set and start date to fill vacant full-time police officer position.
Motion by Radke, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hess, discussion.
I don't know if everybody's gotten, uh, what we, the officer that, uh, in an entry level, what was decided on between FHR and everybody, uh, police and chief and administrator was to start any lateral transfer at a level two, um, with a probationary period for one year. Of course, the benefits would be eligible for any full-time employee that would start vacation upon one week of completion for labor policy, necessary time, sick time, retirement, life insurance, dental, health, vision and nationwide deferred retirement offered, uh, that would be standard for any employee that we would employ here. And the reason that we were going with a level two is I guess the candidate that was, uh, put forth had some experience and being, uh, already an officer in a different department, any lateral transfer, uh, we don't have to put as much time and energy into that person because they've already probably done an FTO at another department. Not that they wouldn't have to do something here for the village.
Just a question.
Sure.
How many trustees had an opportunity to meet the candidate?
Um, you know, that was, uh, none of us that I know of, unless there's someone that, uh, are here. And that was some of the discussion, um, you know, FHR is only involved in doing a benefit package and set the wages and the start date. As far as meeting a candidate or asking questions of anything like that, that's up to the PFC. Um, you know, we've talked about that, cause you know, prior, we, some employees, we've, we've done that for and some we haven't. Um, I guess we could set forth, uh, in the future that, um, any new employee would have to meet with FHR to discuss a benefit and a wage package, but that would be it. We don't, uh, there's nothing else that requires an employee to meet with, uh, any trustee when we have a police and fire commission.
I'll just keep my personal opinion, I, I have complete faith in the PFC. Um, apparently, well, the trustees aren't being asked to approve the, the hire though, is that correct?
Correct.
They do. Hmm, okay, thank you.
So I've had heartburn for the last ten years when it comes to hiring employees, not just police, not just fire, but anybody. Um, if you're not part of FHR, you're not a part of those qual, those discussions. If, if we don't know about it or we don't go to that meeting as a, as a trustee that sits in the back or something. Um, I have a hard time uh, approving a benefit package without even seeing the guy. I could walk right by the guy right now or the person or the hire, and it's not just police, it's, I'm just saying, in the last ten years, it's been a lot of, it goes through FHR, we hire somebody and we have to sit here and approve or disapprove. Um, I just, I, I, I have, I wish the process could change to allow us, even if it's one month or a couple of weeks or a special meeting that is, 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 uh, is called, that we can meet the, the individual and maybe even have some, um, discussion about the benefits or, or whatever, cause ultimately we're the leadership for, for these people, um, so that's all I have to say.
Yeah, and that, that was a huge topic and, you know, again, with the FHRs, just the benefits and the wages, of course. And that's something that we've, we're probably gonna discuss or depending on who, how the committees come out next Wednesday, but I would suggest maybe as a board, as a whole, that we, we do discuss that on any employee and setting maybe that again, after anybody is approved, uh, from the police and fire commission or anywhere else, that the employee would meet with us for the wage and benefit package. Maybe as a committee of the hall or whatever you guys wanna do, but, um, I, I do know that Chairman Stewart, uh, told us about the person that they put forth, I do have confidence in the person. Um, I haven't met the person, but, um, I understand that, um, Chief Abbott has confidence in the person, so.
So uh, at this point, I'm just, uh, we want to get somebody up and running here um for the police department. But that's the wage and salary that we're pushing forward.
I have two, one comment and one question. Um, first, the question is, are these benefit packages the same for all full-time employees in the village? So that's.
So the benefits underneath here are all the same. That this is, this is basically per a benefit package. Um, for every full-time employee, the one week, the necessary prorate retirement.
That's.
Obviously, you know, there's a little bit for cops, but that is, that is basically every employee is offered that policy. There's, there's no negotiating in that, right? In the past, we've hired man, maybe administrators or police chiefs that have negotiated sick leave time and things like that and vacation. But um, this is, this is the standard. This is what, this is what, this is what's offered to every employee.
So the negotiation really could be maybe a well pay. That's, that's fine. That's, I just wanted to make sure that was a standard benefit. My comment is, I think personally, I think it would be beneficial to have a full-time employee meet with the board. Maybe not interject into the hiring process, but at least the opportunity to get meet and greet. And, you know, so you know the person individually. And so I'll just throw that out.
Thank you.
Chairman, if you would, you allow me to make a quick comment. Yeah, that, I I think that's fine. Um, however, I think the standard question would be, would you're meeting with this prospective employee? Who's already been approved by a PFC? Would you want to meet with him in order to reject his employment? Would that be a possibility? Because if you did, that would be illegal.
No, thanks. Not, not from my standpoint. I just to meet and know who he is. I I I agree with Chair, uh, Dr. Saylor. I don't know this individual. I wouldn't know if I walked past him. So at least I could say hi and get to know this individual.
Because Lon, um, after Lon's meeting and and my me- I had a meeting right after and we discussed the same thing. Um, yeah, I I like ideas of meet and greet. I do. I I think it brings us together.
I I trust and value what you're doing and I trust that you're hiring the selection is right person. I would just like to know who he is. Personal, that's my opinion.
I understand.
Did you ever hand up?
Thank you. Um, I was kind of chatty at our meeting on uh Monday about the same issue. PFC hires, period. I'm arguing that wages, FHR meets, sets the wages. And if the guy, we, I don't know where the hell this thing got in, the PFC is gonna fire him. But, or the, not PFC, FHR. We sat down, Eric hit it, I, by the way, just like you were listening and what I had to say Monday. If they don't agree with some wages, well, then we have to keep working at it. But if he doesn't accept the wages or we don't think he is, should be at this level. We keep negotiating, or he says, well, forget it. But there is no way in in HE double hockey sticks that anybody can fire. That is their job.
I'm not disagreeing with anything you said.
Agreed.
But I also think.
I never disagreed with any of that.
I I also think it's, it's incumbent upon the department head, whether it's. Director of Public Works or the Fire Chief or the Police Chief to advocate on behalf of his employee. Or prospective employee.
Absolutely.
I'd hate to get into a situation where you have nine people interviewing uh uh an employee coming up.
It's imposing.
I'm not, I'm not advocating interviewing or the board interviewing anybody. I don't, I'm not at all.
To the committee.
I I know that and I agree with that.
And another thing, a meet and greet is when you bring people in and eat your new cheese and stuff like that. It's not a meet and greet to be discussing issues, you know, the wages and stuff like that.
I I agree with that. I wasn't advocating that at all.
No, it's not towards you, Rick. It's just, I don't, it just, every once in a while, somebody will, PFC does the hiring. We're not talking to him about getting hired. He's already hired.
Understand.
I'm, I'm just making a motion to approve a wage and benefit per- uh, package to whomever they decide they wanted to hire. And if this person, whomever they are, rejects it, I'm, this is no matter who they they hired or whom. I'm just asking that we do this for an entry level lateral transfer officer of any person. If even if this person decides not to take it, then I guess that's up to the PFC if they have more on the eligibility list or not.
We know what the motion is.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. And then, like you said earlier, Lon, we'll talk about this. We can talk about this at FHR this next round.
Correct. And this wasn't a unilateral decision made on Lon's, you know, part there. It came from Administrator Martinson. It came from Chief Abbott. You know, this was, and and again, it it does pay to know the person, but realistically, we're just trying to figure out where they sit in these three levels. As far as what they bring to the table, as far as education, experience and things of that nature. So that was what the conversation was about. Um, second thing, would it make a difference? And and Chairman Stewart mentioned the same thing too. We just hired a police chief. There's three department heads realistically within the village. Would it make a difference with meet and greets and board involvement? When it's a department head versus a rank and file member? Because right now, we're talking about, we have a chief who's the hiring manager who brings forth the recommendations from PFC, FHR addresses that. I I can see it being slightly different if we're talking about a police chief, a fire chief or an administrator. Then the board would have more involvement with that because we're technically directly overseeing what they do. But this is a level separated from village board. So I can see there being possibly two different ways of doing things. Where there's a hiring manager that's chief, chief or administrator, and we let them do their thing. Or a department head that we would actually have more of an involved process.
Okay, thank you. We will talk more uh, I bet you're with that. But motion on the tables to approve the proposed wages, benefit packages and the set start date, which it is April twenty eighth. Motion was made by Red Key, the second was by Hess. Do you have any questions on the package or anything like that, of that nature? Okay, because I know we jumped into the other discussion, so I want to make sure we have no questions on what we're actually voting on. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? That one carries.
That's all we have from FHR and uh. We'll wait till Wednesday to set the.
Next meeting.
Next meetings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any unfinished business? Any new business? Report from village administrator.
I'm just have a few things on that last hot, hot topic. I know Chief Abbott did talk to me today. And whenever they set the police and fire commission meeting, that uh you planning on having a little open house with both him, the chief and the new officer will be here. Um, part of that discussion as long as the chairman lets that happen. Um, the other thing I have is.
Yeah, that would be helpful.
That's all I want to do is beat him.
Yep, that's good.
Um, village laptops. So next week, Wednesday will be um. Our meeting, so come next week on Wednesday, if you'd like, or not iPads or not laptop. If you would like a village iPad, um, next week, Wednesday, please let me know. Um, the process will be that I'll put your name on a village iPad. If you don't have one, I'll send it to Wood County IT Department. I'll have them get in contact with you directly to uh set up what you want for email. Um, with the new Windows three sixty-five, they can do all the updates, everything you want. So next week, Wednesday, if you want an iPad, let me know. I'll set up a time with Wood County and you'll work directly with Wood County to make sure iPad is what you want and has your emails and what, how you want to. Set up your iPads. Um, any leftover iPads that we don't have, after next week. We're gonna be sending them to the, couple to the fire department and one to the wastewater and water um for different topics.
Now, the iPads do, we still, we're talking about the one we got now.
Yeah, those are three-year-old iPads. Um, and Wood County quoted us, it'll be a couple hundred dollars to to update them with the new Windows and however. Obviously, your email stays the same because we don't have any board trustees changing, but I want you to work directly with their IT director. I don't want to be the middleman of that, so you work directly with them.
Yeah, as long as it's the same one.
Yep, it's the same one and, and you go up to the second floor and work with them directly, so.
You know, so we'll bring the current, if we have one, we bring that current one to IT at Wood County.
Yeah, just let me know you want to keep your iPad, or you're sorry, keep your iPad, and I will schedule a a time and a date. It'll be email, we'll email with you involved in it, so.
Thank you.
Um, other than that, that's all I have um at this time.
Yeah, anything for you? No? Great, um, trustee comments.
I have two things. Um, I received a, an email, Ben, that I'm gonna forward you. Um. I gotta make sure that it's legit, but it sounds legit, um, about the website. They're changing the backend of um. How those look, and it's another company that bought them. And so the reason I say it's, it looks legit because the administrator at the time worked at Spring Green. And that's one of the municipalities that's listed and some other things. So I'll give you the contact info and see what happens. There might be some updates or or something that'll help our, our website.
Oh, that'd be awesome, because definitely Kim's been, we've been trying to get our meetings and everything updated. Kim's been working, you know, there's been a lot of suggestions. Through the last couple of months and things that we need to add to our website and locations, and I know Kim's been working directly with them. So that'd be great.
So I'll send it to you. I'll, I'll vet it a little bit and see what it is. Uh, second and lastly, not to, to beat the dead horse, but. We are stewards of the, of, of tax dollars and um, the approval was just made and approved to. Uh, to approve a certain amount of money, a, a salary for the, the village, for an employee. And I'm not talking about the, who the person is, but the salary. And we don't know what level one is. I don't know what level three is. I don't know what makes them qualified for level two. I trust Lon would know and then give us the best information, but for me to vote on one way or the other. I don't know. I sat through Chief Drew's negotiations and it was, it was interesting and it was a, a good back and forth battle, but. We just approved thirty dollars an hour times, you know, sixty thousand dollars-ish for, for an employee that none of us had. I shouldn't say none of us, some of us didn't even have knowledge for, so. I hope in the future, maybe we can have a, a, a committee of the whole. I think that would solve everything. Whatever the candidate is, and then we have a negotiation, a closed, maybe not a closed session, but, you know, like we used to do in the past with some of the employees. Because ultimately, that money that just was approved is taxpayers, so that's it.
And we had a damn good discussion with Chief Drew at that meeting. He had a breast ball.
Okay. Anything else from anybody? Okay, we will set the committee calendars next week at the reorganization meeting, which is on Wednesday at six. It's next Wednesday. Oh, I thought you were raising your hand. Okay, with that, I will, without objection, I will adjourn the meeting. Oh, possibly. Do we have any objection going off table?
Whoever wasn't able to watch or view yesterday's, last night's meeting at, I would highly recommend it. And that's just based off of how much of an issue the DMI property was the last three months during election season. Whoever brought in all those people, kudos, that was, in this room was full of people from all over the state of Wisconsin here to answer a lot of questions. And it was extremely informative. Um, like you said, it's not like there's a silver bullet, but I think, I think based on the communities. Wanting something to be done as a trustee, it would be wise to at a minimum, watch the video to where you. You're a little bit more informed on what all the DMI break, that was like a, you know, pill of what was discussed. At that meeting and to hear the professionals saying, hey, this, nope, yep, it was extremely informative. So.
You're here.
Thank you. All right, then without objection, I will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-three.